Is there a motion to return to executive session? Ms. Gray. Executive by Mr. Florina. Full call and motion.
Trechow.
Yes.
Tattler.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
We will return to regular session. The next item on the agenda is reports of committees. This is Gray.
Thank you, President Eleanor. The Human Resources Committee has two pieces of legislation on tonight's agenda. Item number three, which is the first reading of an ordinance to authorize a hiring of five part-time seasonal service department employees from June 1st, 2015 through October 31st, 2015, and the hiring of one employee from June 1st to September 30th, 2015. At this time, I would like to amend that legislation. For instance, in section one of that ordinance, council hereby authorizes the mayor to hire five part-time seasonal service department employees at a maximum of 78 hours for pay period beginning June 1st through August 31st.
Stating out the rest of that for right now?
Well, I wouldn't start it on the 1st. I would give it twelve weeks.
Okay. Fifteen through September.
Yeah, and I don't think you need a final date. I think we'll just say twelve weeks.
Okay.
Okay. A pay period beginning June 15th for 12 weeks.
Rest of the legislation is standing there.
Section two, council hereby appropriates 27,500 from unappropriated general fund to hire part-time seasonal employees within the service department as follows. And that would be 5.5 employees. At 5,000? Or we keep the five?
I just want to make sure I heard everything right in section one.
Mm-hmm.
Did you get? I heard you say the five part-time seasonal employees.
Got a little louder. Don't turn it off, otherwise we burn.
I just wanted to make sure that in section one, I heard correctly that you got the five, uh, five part-time and then the one plus the one part-time in section one?
We can keep that. Yes.
Five and one. And then, um, then in section two, I heard you say 27,500?
Yes, which is 5.5 at 5,000.
Correct.
And that would change from in two for each one of those funds, 27, 5.
So we've got 5.5, but then we're keeping the one, so wouldn't that be?
It's a part-time.
No, the five are the part-time.
I think that five would be part-time at 39 hours per week, one will be part-time at 20 hours per week. This is where the 5.5 comes from.
Correct.
So where it says 39, that should be changed to 20 because that is in reference just to the one part-time.
I believe that's accurate.
Yes, sir. What was the 20 that you're talking about?
20 hours?
The last phrase of section one pertains only to the one part-time seasonal service department employee.
At a maximum of 39 hours per pay period.
So it'd be 40, I guess.
It would be 40. For pay period.
Right.
Right. So let me read that again. Council hereby authorizes the mayor to hire five part-time seasonal service department employees at a maximum of 78 hours per pay period, beginning June 15th for 12 weeks, and one part-time seasonal service department employee at a maximum of 40 hours per pay period. Period. For June, I'm sorry. Beginning June 15th for 12 weeks.
All right. So the first phrase stays at 78 hours per pay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, uh, that needs to be changed in the title as well.
Going to the title, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire five part-time seasonal service department employees at a maximum of 78 hours per pay period from June 15th, striking out October 31st, 2015, and writing in for 12 weeks. And one part-time seasonal service department employee at a maximum of 40 hours per pay period from June 15th, striking out September 30th, 2015, and adding for 12 weeks. Appropriating 27, 5 to fund said positions and declaring an emergency. We've already gone through section one, made the amendment, amended changes there. Then in section four, said part-time employees shall be paid at a rate of 8.50 per hour with the exception of those employees assigned to perform weed eating and grass mowing of areas that are the responsibility of the service department, of which said employee shall be paid at a rate of 9.50 per hour. In addition, all said employee, all said part-time employees are not authorized to receive any fringe benefits except those required by law. I'll read that again. Said part-time employees shall be paid at a rate of 8.50 per hour with the exception of those employees assigned to perform weed eating and grass mowing of areas that are the responsibility of the service department, of which said employee shall be paid at a rate of 9.50 per hour. In addition, all said part-time employees are not authorized to receive any fringe benefits except those required by law.
Okay.
You guys got it?
All right. Motion has been made to amend this ordinance. Is there a second? Second by, um, Mrs. Neal. Sorry, I lost you all. We'll call one more motion.
Trechow.
Yes.
Tattler.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Ames.
Um, so the legislation, the ordinance has been amended.
The second item on the agenda is item number four, the first reading of an ordinance to authorize hiring of six part-time seasonal utility department employees for the summer season, beginning the 1st of June through the 30th of September, and appropriate $31,590 to fund said positions. The appropriation of those will come, one employee will come from water treatment fund, one employee will come from the sewer treatment fund or line item, the two employees will come from water distribution and two employees will come from sewer collection. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. For both items, I will request a way of the three read rule.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Other committee reports. Ms. Patrick.
Uh, thank you. The utilities committee has one item on tonight's agenda. It's item number five, and it's the first reading of an ordinance appropriating $13,000 for the preparation of plants and stuff for roof replacement at the water treatment plant. In last July, uh, 2014, utilities committee was given an assignment through legislation to appropriate this $13,000 for preparation of plants and specs. But city engineer Tom Day was at that meeting and he felt his department would have the time to go ahead and prepare this and save utilities that money. But as we run through the year and with the levies and all their decreased workload, we found out it could not be done in-house. But it was past the time for preparing the budget, so it was not included in the 2015 budget. So if fast forward to today and we need to go ahead and pass this ordinance because the two roofs need to be replaced, one is on the actual water plant, the other one's on the garage. They are original to the plant, which is in service in 1992. That makes them 23 years old. Patching leaks is no longer effective for cost buys and the number of leaks is increasing drastically. So this allowance, uh, ordinance would allow us to move forward and get the plans and specs prepared. So it's appropriate time. I will ask that we waive the three read rule on this and pass it tonight. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Mrs. Ames.
Thank you, Mrs. Eleanor. Development has one item on the agenda. Item two is the second reading of a resolution authorizing the mayor to file an application to the state to participate in the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, allocation program for fiscal year 2015. I reported on this at the last meeting. This is an annual request. I let it read, um, for two reads. I'm going to ask tonight to waive the three read rule and pass it so they can get in by the deadline required by the state. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ames. Mr. Chapman.
Thank you, President Eleanor. Uh, number one item is up for third read. We did have a review session on this last week, and I think every council member spoke up. And I don't see any issues. This is the, uh, changes we made in an ordinance that's been on the books that adds some language to it and a, uh, a fine of $30. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Other reports. All right. Seeing none, then we'll move to reports from officials. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, President Eleanor. Uh, first item I'd like to discuss the bench signs. I was asked by, uh, President Eleanor to address this and what our current status is on this. Mr. Bales, who owns the bench signs that were frequenting on the corner of Bridge and Main and were absolutely. Did get a vendor's permit from the engineering department to come up to code. He originally put those bench signs out in 1995, had not paid that vendor's license for all those years. And when we started looking into it, decided we would recognize that and ask him to get a fresh permit, which he did. Uh, he was also delinquent in his taxes. He got with the auditor and repaid the, um, tax taxes to the satisfaction of the auditor at the time. And so that brought him back up to being street legal. The bench signs were asked to be placed at transit bus stops that were on commercial property. No private residences were involved. There were 12, 24 benches that were originally talked to with Mr. Bales to provide a service for writing, uh, clients of the transit department to aid in, uh, some affirmative mobility and just having to wait for a bus at, um, 90 degree heat in the summertime. City engineer Day and I are discussing the development of a piece of legislation, uh, that will go through council committee to address bench signs and, you know, understanding that his, um, vendor's license concludes at the end of this year. One thing that we're doing for the transit stops is we modified our capital project requests for the upcoming year to go down to two buses from three and use the additional funds we normally get to have transit provide covered seating at the tran, at the bus stops. Uh, this will eliminate the need for the bench signs that are currently and get that issue cleaned up. We'll do that through careful legislation because our legislation for signers doesn't cover bench signs. It covers fixed post signs. Uh, in the same, along with the, the same ordinance, uh, we're also going to develop some legislation to clean up our entryways into the city and the menagerie of signs that are dotting the landscape at all the entry points to the city. So that's, uh, put in some sort of logical fashion as well. That'd be an upcoming council assignment that, uh, once the engineer and I get to, uh, we'll hammer out the details and get something that's a workable format, we'll turn that into a committee assignment for the engineering committee. Any questions on that?
No. The only question I have is, and you brought it up, it's just like he's got four bridges out there on that entrance off of Bridge Street going to the golf course.
Now, there is, there is one thing. If they're on city right of way, we'll have those removed.
Okay.
If he made, if he made a deal with a private business to put bench signs on there, the city has no call on that.
Okay. Well, we have another issue with that coffee craze too, their signings out there.
Okay. That'll be handled in the legislation. That can't be in the city right of way.
And we gotta get the golf course to put a real sign up.
Okay. The second thing I'd like to bring up is last Thursday, we had a very informative meeting by the Attorney General's Office on sunshine law. A member of the, this, um, body went to that. Recognized the need that, uh, we have to do a better job when it comes to public records requests and the timeliness of the response, the thoroughness of the response and the transparency of city operations. I think that, uh, one of the things that they had, uh, as one of the requirements was posting the sunshine law policy in every city building. We covered this briefly in my staff meeting this morning. I'll be working with law director to establish that posting, to have our own sunshine laws. And I think that too should go through council, uh, just so everybody's on board with that and we all work in the same methods to, uh, get public records out to the public that requests those records. So, um, along with that comes a, uh, we're currently updating our record retention policy to accommodate, uh, digital records, um, mainly police car cams and the body cameras that our police officers would be wearing. We have nothing in our, our current policy that addresses that. Uh, one thing that I should point out that when, uh, one thing they said in the training was that when it's time to, um, destroy files, you should destroy them or they are subject to search. Uh, so the record retention policy will be developed through council, shared by all, and we'll all be offering office sanitation. It's terms of, uh, just want to briefly discuss the task force that was established by, um, the sheriff and the, and the chief of police for the, the missing women. Uh, there's, there's no details I can go into that are under, as that is currently under investigation, but, um, we are from Columbus all the way to Porchette with our collaboration of law enforcement agencies and the FBI along the way. Uh, because there are missing women all along the way down through that stretch. Uh, so we feel that synergizing and collaborating between different law enforcement agencies will be able to produce some answers and quickly, more so than quit on our own. And lastly, I'd like to ask the council for the passage of item three in particular and four, so we get the seasonal help on board as soon as possible. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Auditor Feeney.
Thank you, Madam President. I will touch on, uh, item three in my report, um, so, and the amendments, uh, therein. So when the, uh, first request came through, I think, um, it was something like $80,000 because it included some additional people that we, uh, had already been hired. It had been reduced to 57, um, and frankly, I had a little bit of hesitation on that appropriation because this is an appropriation from the general fund. We're getting close to mid-year, but as we always talk about, um, it takes four, five, six months before we can get a good grasp on what revenue is doing for the year. I think that, um, the service department, street construction in particular, has some, um, issues that it's dealing with this year, namely, uh, the loss of some key personnel for extended periods of time, which is driving up, um, departmental costs, frankly. Whether it's higher than anticipated health leave costs or, um, which drive overtime costs, the, the department, uh, expenses are up. So, um, this ordinance particularly as amended kind of, um, splits the difference between going all the way through the 20 weeks that were originally requested. I think the 12 weeks gets us the help that we need now, um, at a price that's frankly more affordable than what we're spending and gets the job done quicker. It also gives us 12 weeks to evaluate where we stand with the budget, where we stand with unappropriated, um, balance of the general fund and to look at, um, what we want to do going into the call. Uh, this is frankly an appropriation, I think, um, that, uh, we would be appropriating one way or the other. Either there would be some appropriation for overtime, um, and for, uh, filling in for some of these folks that unfortunately, uh, bet out due to no fault of their own. And frankly, we will probably be back here, um, hopefully in four, 12 weeks to do an appropriation, get us through the end of the year, whether that's for seasonal folks or not. This is the same fund that does snow removal, um, and some other things. So, uh, it, it, it's just one of those things. But it, it is an appropriation from the general fund. I think that the 27,000 instead of 57,000, um, is a number that we can, uh, stomach a little bit easier, take us through the summer and, uh, get some folks out working fairly quickly. So I think it's, it's a good compromise, um, for what we know now. So I, I would also recommend passage of that tonight. Item number four, which is a similar request, um, those employees provide support and labor for appropriations that you've already done. Fire hydrant work and, um, that sort of thing. Uh, so I think that request, uh, makes sense, even if it does have to be passed in emergency passage. So I think passing that today will also get, uh, some, much needed work done very quickly. In the interest of time and heat, I will end my report.
Thank you, Mr. Feeney. Law Director, where's your?
Thank you, President Eleanor. Um, and with respect to item number three this evening, uh, I would just say, and I think that we talked about it earlier, that, you know, our office prosecutes individuals for nuisance violations. And, uh, sometimes it's very hard to prosecute nuisance violations for tall grass when the city's not cutting their own grass. So I think that we should, uh, set a good example for the citizens of Chillicothe. Secondly, I'd like to ask help on legislation request. And basically, um, we're going to revamp our legislation request to make sure that any ordinance appropriating funds, that we get the, the correct dollar amounts, where the money is coming from, uh, the general fund or name of the unappropriated fund, um, which line item number the funds are to be placed. Committee chairpersons, you might want to request that information from the department head making your initial request. When you start gathering that information, um, a lot of required but often missing information would be the specific ordinance number of an ordinance you wish to amend, um, and suggested amendment, the specific reasons that you might have for emergency language, and copies of contracts or other pertinent documents that that legislation is, is referring to. We, uh, also attended, Teresa and I attended the sunshine training on Thursday. We were, um, very informative and very happy to see a lot of members in this, um, room also attended that. And on Friday, um, we attended a DUI prosecuting training. Uh, it was put on by the Department of Public Safety. It was six and a half hours of training that was no cost to the city and several of my assistants and I were able to take part in that. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. It brings us to audience participation. Uh, just a reminder that if you'd like to address the council, please step to the front, give us your name and address, and, um, council rule, whether it's each street or five minutes, each topic to 15. Who would like to address council this evening? Would you start with your name and address?
My pump house address or my home address?
Home address.
Home address.
Uh, I'm Ted Pickisen and I hope that's the 542 Seventh Street. And I am here to represent, uh, I am president of the Pump House and the 420s. And, uh, I'm here to give a brief overview of our annual report for last year. And, uh, I'd like to let you know the Pump House is alive and well here in Chillicothe. Uh, we will be celebrating our 24th anniversary this August 3rd. And, uh, I'm sure most of you remember when we began, uh, there was a lot of, uh, people here in Chillicothe didn't even think we would make it in the beginning. So we're very happy to be here for 24 years. Uh, we make every effort to highlight our local artists and agencies. And our community here are just a few that we featured last year. In 2014, we only had a small display of art from the Pioneer Center. This year, we had approximately 106 pieces and so would a great number of them. Another event that we're very proud of is our all high school competition. Last year, LCMB helped sponsor and presented awards to the first, second, and third, uh, prize winners and the best of show. And they also gave $200 for the winning class, uh, for the furnishing art supplies. Uh, that was for the winning art classroom. Other businesses have also, uh, been very supportive of the exhibits. I think one of the greatest highlights of all for last year was the Combat Paper exhibit that, uh, probably some of you did come down to the gallery and see. And that was a national show, uh, that came from all across the country. Uh, it was presented by, uh, some of the wounded soldiers with P, uh, PTSD. And they sent their artwork to the pump house and it's put on display. That it was artwork that was made from shredded uniforms and then put in, uh, put it, put into art form and then, uh, actually, you know, then they made, made it into art. Then one of their members came to Chillicothe and he worked with Dart Hunter and they presented a class and we had several members of our community, uh, that came to Dart Hunter's studio and learned how to do this process. And we were featured, Pump House and Chillicothe was featured on In Ohio Magazine and on PBS, uh, Broadway. So Pump Ha, uh, Pump House gets a lot of notoriety. I don't know whether you've ever seen any of it or not, but we get, uh, a lot in catalogs and a lot of different magazines. So, uh, hope, hope you've been watching us. But, uh, not only do we hold different exhibits, there are 12 different exhibits per year, but we have a variety of fundraisers, we have a lot of rentals and, uh, that help us fund Pump House. Uh, our gift gallery, it helps a lot of our local artists, uh, it's supportive of them, it helps them, uh, make money. So we are, you know, it's a venue, it's helping them to, uh, have an income. Uh, last year, in, in the little brochure I gave you, I'm not going to go into all of it, you can read it, I don't want to take up all your time for it. But we had 5,000 visitors, around 5,000 visitors, uh, from 24 states and one for. But we had five thousand visitors, around five thousand visitors, from twenty-four states and one foreign country. The Pump House is, we have no paid employees, we have twenty-two volunteers. So, I think that's pretty good. We're all, we're all down there just checking a lot. But in two weeks, we will be holding an art camp with ten students already signed up. When we let, when we let it be known, we did not even advertise in the newspaper about our art camp that we were gonna do. Bev put it on the, on the Facebook, and we got ten students, just like that. And, you know, if we had more space, which you all know that I am trying to get the new building done. And I'm sure you heard about that. I'm trying to raise funds for the new educational building. We already have three hundred and twenty-five thousand for it. I need three hundred thousand more for it. But we would be able to have twenty-five students in that space if we had the new building. But that's gonna have to wait. I'm hoping, I'm, I'm really hoping that we could have it done for our twenty-fifth anniversary. I don't know whether that's gonna happen, but I'm just hoping. So, if you know anybody that's got any extra money that they'd like to pass over, it's my right. Since now we're cutting it, so I thank you for your time. And come down and visit us at Pump House. And I'd like to introduce Dave Reader, he is our treasurer. And he'll let you know how our needs-
Hi, Dave Reader, I'm the treasurer of the Pump House. What's your address, sir? Three, three buildings. Thank you. Last year, we had an income of roughly sixty-eight thousand and expenses of roughly sixty-five thousand. So, we had a small period of, which is sort of typical for nonprofits like this. We had about ten thousand dollars, we had about eleven thousand dollars in artist sales last year, which I think benefits the whole community. Membership was a little under twelve thousand dollars, which shows the breadth and depth of, I think, the law membership is pretty significant. Also, I noticed among the numbers, we spent about three thousand dollars last year maintaining the building. This year, we spent three thousand dollars this week maintaining the building. So, we are, we are maintaining this, this little jewel of the park, this historic site with people in Chillicothe and through the benefit of people in Chillicothe. And once Ted mentioned the, the artist benefit in front of us too, we drummed up, I think, twelve hundred dollars in sales tax. So, twelve hundred and forty-seven dollars in sales tax. So, I hope you'll think well of us whenever you consider any legislation. Also, I want to thank the city, because they support us in many ways by maintaining the ground around the building. And that means a lot to us too, since that building is early, which means we're having a lot of work done on it this year. And I think we'd be pleased if you could come down and just go by and look. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave Reader. Anyone else like to address council, Mr. Green? All right, seeing none, we'll move to old business.
Mrs. Green? Thank you for the honor. I would just like to reiterate and to support the law director's comments with regard to requests coming to council. And the reason why I'm bringing this up, on your old business, at least a couple of years ago, I submitted a form to then-council president Mary Reinhardt, and I go into the mayor, that me, me and council would have liked to have had as a part of requests coming forward that delineated a lot of the information that law director representatives talked about with regard to information and making sure that due diligence was done, required to come to council, that include accounts, funds, information with regard to financial, as well as any supportive documents that should have been a part of the request when it comes to council members for me to be able to discuss so that we weren't going back and forth, because it does go down the process. And I think being able to do a little better with that in the future for requests going forward.
Other old business, Mr. Paul?
I'd like to address item number one on tonight's agenda. I received an email from a certain citizen who made some great points, and I just want to point some of these out. They said this ordinance pivot yard parking on High Street is a legal drafting disaster. It's too vague to enforce. Who is responsible for the violation? Is it the landowner, the tenant, the car owner, the car, the driver, the car leasing, the car leaser? Similar questions that came up whenever we had the red light cameras and we were going to cite somebody who, without a police officer present. Also, what is the minimum time? There just seem to be some vague aspects to it. I understand, I don't want people parking on the sidewalk or driving up over the sidewalk. That damages our sidewalks and, of course, even if the homeowner or property owner being responsible for the repair of that sidewalk, it's gonna set damage a lot longer than necessary. But I do have some concerns after reading this that we may want to look a little closely before passage of that item to make sure that we don't get ourselves into a situation where the law's vague and people are not being treated fairly. So, that's-
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Other old business, Mr. Green?
I handed out last week to members in the gallery and to council members at Shakwa, which Mr. Green didn't mention, I want to bring that up. It's starting on June sixteen on the Pump House grounds. And it is starting at ten o'clock in the morning with workshops, there's student workshops, adult workshops, and performances each night from sixteen to twenty. And thank the Pump House for sponsoring this, letting us use their property and support. And they have sponsors on the, the fans that they're handing out with all of the different workshops and performances that are going to be. So, these are available too. And they have these at the Convention and Visit Bureau. And there are several places around town. If anybody needs a schedule on events, let me know. There are Convention and Visit Bureau, the library, every place we can think of that have taken. And encourage everybody to come, they have a sign up across from the first place on Water Street talking about it. And it looks like it's going to be a very nice event. Thank you.
Other old business? Seeing none, we'll move to petitions and correspondence. Mr. Paul? New business, Mr. Green?
I handed out to council members. This is something that I got from Mr. Green. And this kind of pertains to what we're talking about tonight, but it's more disappointing information. If you look at this list, it's a two-sided list of all the different properties in the city that the service department and some of their parks department too have pet grass, we're meeting. It's not just Yachtangi Park, there are places all over. And it's just retention ponds, entrances, all over the city. It's just amazing how much property we have to take care of. And I thank Mr. Green and his department for doing this and strongly supporting the hiring of people for service department. We have a lot of people. Thank you.
Other new business? All right, seeing none, are there meeting dates for committees to be announced for this evening?
The Civil Service Commission will be meeting Thursday, the eleventh of June at four thirty over in Grand Central.
That's impressive.
And nuisance abatement will be tomorrow at two thirty at the city building.
All right, and that brings us to legislation. Item one.
Third reading of an ordinance adding section three fifty-one point eighteen prohibition against parking on front or side yard to the codified ordinances of the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, and amending section three fifty-one point ninety-nine penalty. Third reading.
All on the ordinance?
Trussell, yes. Hatton, yes. Cole, no. Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Yes.
Waring? No. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Pass six to three.
Item number two.
Second reading of a resolution authorizing the mayor to file an application to the state of Ohio to participate in the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Allocation Program for fiscal year 2015, accepting the grant if funded and agreeing to comply with the program requirements, authorizing Ohio Regional Development Corporation to administer the program and declare an emergency. Second reading.
Mrs. Green, send me the break of three and four, please. Second, my mistake, Trussell. We'll call on the motion with three and four.
Trussell, yes. Hatton, yes. Cole?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Ames?
That motion has passed. We'll have both call on the ordinance.
Trussell, yes. Patrick, yes. Cole?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
And the ordinance has passed. Item number three.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire five part-time seasonal service department employees at a maximum of seventy-eight hours per pay period from June fifteen, 2015, for twelve weeks. And one part-time seasonal service department employee at a maximum of forty hours per pay period from June fifteen, 2015, for twelve weeks, appropriating twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to fund said positions and declare an emergency. First reading.
Mrs. Green?
All right. I would like to request that this time the break be three and four.
Send me by Mrs. Ames. We'll call on the motion with three and four.
Trussell, yes. Hatton, yes. Cole?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
That motion has passed. We'll call on the ordinance, please.
Trussell, yes. Hatton, yes. Cole?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
And the ordinance has passed. Item number four.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire six part-time seasonal employees, seasonal utilities department employees for the summer season beginning June one, 2015, through September thirty, 2015, appropriating thirty-one thousand five hundred ninety dollars to fund said positions and declare an emergency. First reading.
Mrs. Green? Once again, I would request for the three and four. Second? Second, my mistake, Patrick. We'll call on the motion with three and four.
Trussell, yes. Hatton, yes. Cole?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Motion has passed. We'll call on the ordinance.
Trussell, yes. Hatton, yes. Cole?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
And the ordinance has passed. Item number five.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating thirteen thousand dollars for the preparation of plans and specifications for roof replacement at the water treatment plant and adjacent building and declare an emergency. First reading.
Mrs. Patrick? Would you like to make the motion with three and four? Second? I'm sorry, Mr. Cole? We'll call on the motion with three and four.
Trussell, yes. Hatton, yes. Cole?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll call on the ordinance.
Trussell, yes. Hatton, yes. Cole?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
And the ordinance has passed. Is there a motion to? And someone said? Corcoran? We'll call on the motion to?
Trussell, yes. Hatton, yes. Cole?
Yes.
Patrick? Neal?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Ames?
We are adjourned.